All right, we'll call it a order in the special meeting of the County Advisory Plan Commission. This is a special meeting for a specific purpose to consider language for, proposed language from the APC here on a moratorium on accepting new applications for permits. Called a order, we are going to, the minutes, since this is a special meeting, minutes from last meeting will be done at the next regular meeting. So let's take our attendance. So we have Sue Anderson.
Hey, we can hear you guys in here. We can't hear you guys down out there. It's getting all the way here.
Laura is here. Lynn here. Jim is here. Jake is not here, correct? Jamie is here. Tim is not here, while you're listening, we speak. Mark is here. And Lynn is here. So we have a, do I read on the others? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So we have a forum. There is no report of committees and officers, since this is a special meeting. So what we are gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna hold general public comment until the end. We're gonna try to actually get this done that we're doing so that the committee can actually do its business. So I'm going to read the proposed language that we're gonna talk about, and then we will have public comment on that language. And then we're gonna have the meeting do its, sorry, the committee do its business so that we can actually vote. Keep in mind, this is the Advisory Plan Commission. What we vote on is a recommendation that will then go up to the commissioners. The commissioners would then act on it, yes, no, whatever, and then turn that into a ordinance, and that is the point, that it would basically become a law. Okay? So the proposed language will be added to section 9.06 of the current, sorry, 9.06 CS ES permits, which is the commercial solar farms. The proposed language is, provided, comma, however, comma, a moratorium is hereby imposed on the filing and acceptance of any new applications for permits under this article, comma, and this moratorium will commence on June 3rd, June 3, 2024, comma, and end on June 3, 2025. Does anybody have any public comment on that proposed addition to the language?
Why are you waiting two weeks?
Because my understanding, and I will have to defer to Kent, this has to go up to the commissioners, and then they will, they, well, no, I know this is the way this works. This is advisory. What we are recommending goes to the commission. There is no way, to the commissioners, there's no way that we can make this effective today. We have to go through the process. This is a special meeting that was done earlier so that we didn't wait until the next meeting, and we did this as quickly as we could to allow for the proper notices to be given, because if those don't appear in time, anything we do here is irrelevant and has no effect.
So, so notices have to be given prior, the next commissioner's meeting is just coming Monday, so.
Well, but once, if the commission-
I'm sorry, I should've spoken out of turn.
If the commission approves this language tonight, then that has to, has to be available for 10 days.
Okay, yeah.
So that's why it's the June 3rd?
Okay.
Right.
You said that 10-day notice.
Right. So it'll be, it'll be certified, if you vote to send it to the commissioners tonight, it'll be certified tomorrow, and that'll start the 10 days, so the earliest, but the next commissioner meeting after, after the 20th, the 10 days falls within.
Sure, I got you.
So then their next regular meeting is June 30.
You're following.
Any addition to that question?
As an action, sorry, whoever's been commenting, you need to come up and do your, what is it, the name, name and address.
Tom Creek, Wabash Township. And I was the guy that asked the question from around the corner, so that's why I gave the follow-up question. So if that is in fact the case, two weeks, does that mean that Dolphin is gonna be put on hold for a year on this new project that they are waiting on their permit for?
My understanding is no, because the way the law works is, and again, I will defer to Kent on this, but basically, the reason this language talks about applications is you cannot retroactively change a law. So for example, the speed limit's 40 miles an hour, I'm sorry, 50 miles an hour, and you're going 50, you can't change it the week later and say, "Sorry, we changed that down to 40, we're giving you a ticket for last week." It's the same concept. So this will have no effect on Dolphin.
So even though we, as citizens, say, "We changed our mind, we don't want you." You can't, you can't deny them a permit?
It's statutory that when they apply for their permit, that they are grandfathered or they have vested rights at the time they applied for their permit, which was months ago.
So are you saying there's been judgments that set a precedence for this?
It's in the, it's in the Indiana code. It's in, it's section 36-7-4-1109C.
Well, can we delay the permitting process so we drag our feet long enough that they just go away?
This commission has absolutely nothing to do with that. Now, I don't think that would be the case, but keep in mind, all this group legally does is give the advice. This is the advice that we're giving to the commissioners. So everything we're talking about fundamentally does everything that this group can to stop all future solar projects in the county for this year, and to, and to give everybody a chance, give this group a chance, to then go through and talk about revising the actual solar ordinance going forward. Okay? But this, this will have nothing to do with the Dolphin project.
So is this state law then? Because the federal government does it all the time. Something gets okay, says it's gonna go through.
All right, you're gonna have to stand up and give your name.
My name's Aloniers. I'm in here before, and I live right here in town, lived in Fountain County all my life. And there's federal laws out there that does this all the time. I mean, one that everybody's just talking about outside was like the pipeline. That was approved, the money was spent, everything was done. The administration come in, boom, they shut it down, stopped it, said, "No, it's not gonna happen." So why can we not stop this from happening? Because it hasn't started yet.
I'm gonna say the same thing again. This is the advisory commission. What we are proposing is everything that this group can do to stop future permits in solar farms. We don't have the power to change the state law. We don't have the power to do what the other groups do.
And we don't have the power to change county law either.
No, actually, yeah, we-
We make advice, yeah.
That's an excellent point.
We make advice, and, and the old solar ordinance said, when they make application, that's it. Their, the application is in, they make all the required documents for implementation, and you can't-
But again, can't our county, can't you guys, our county, you're representing this county, representing the people here, you can't try to do that?
I would love to, but it's unlawfully. I'm not, I'm not speaking, I should let the attorney speak to it, I apologize, so.
My understanding is legally no. Bluntly, all I care about right here is what this commission can do, because that's all, that is all that-
And we're grateful for what you're doing and all that, but you've got so many more people that wants that next step to be done, if at all possible.
My understanding is that next step is not possible. But regardless of anybody's opinion on that, there's nothing this group can do about that here.
Okay.
Yes, speak your name and all that.
My name's Dave Maltzberger, 2009, South 100 West Beersburg, Indiana, Maltzberger Township. I got a question for the, for the attorneys in the room. In that second paragraph where it says, "The moratorium shall be imposed on the filing and acceptance of new applications," what is the legal, what are you talking about?
It's in the one here, I'm on the two just read.
In the red part, Campbell. In, in the red part.
Second paragraph. It is further ordained that the moratorium shall be imposed on the filing and acceptance of new applications. What is the legal boundaries if we struck out the word filing and just left us sit as accepted? Since we know that Dolphin has, working on their permit, okay, but it's not been presented in its entirety to be accepted yet, if we struck out filing and let it only as acceptance, does that leave us a loophole that we can work with it?
All right, I'm gonna say this again, there is nothing this commission can do that will, tonight, that is going to affect the Dolphin permit. Okay? Okay, anybody else?
Campbell, Brad Green, I just wonder if this is the Advisory Plan Commission or Area Plan Commission?
No, this is advisory. County does not have an area plan commission.
So you guys didn't approve the plan anyway?
What's I have to say?
The zoning plan.
The ordinance?
The ordinance, the zoning ordinance? You're the one that's in effect?
Yeah.
No, this group never approved anything. This group-
You just advise them.
All, all we can do is make a recommendation, and then it goes up to the commissioners, and then the commissioners turn it into an ordinance.
Good, I-
I have a question for my name is Bobby Patton.
Here, come up here.
Your sound system sucks, first of all, you can't hear anything, all are up there. But you said this will go to the commissioners, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We have one commissioner who resigned, we have one commissioner who filed a conflict with interest, so how do you get a vote with one commissioner?
I have no idea. That's not my purview.
There are special rules for when you have a resignation party-
I understand that.
-of that seat, so if the county party apparatus does its job, then there should be a new commissioner by the-
May 25th. The caucus will be May 25th.
On that, so how do we know that they're their point, because this is a pretty serious issue with the people in this county, how do you know you're gonna appoint a commissioner or somebody to fill in for, answer the call, that's gonna be neutral?
You have to talk to the, you have to lobby your committee precinct.
I think that's why the people are trying, because they don't know-
No, 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 we, we don't have anything to do with that, that's, that's the party, that's not, that's separate from the, the government and-
Talk to the, talk to Paul Coen, he should-
I understand that, I would just share, I know how this works, but I also understand it takes two votes or a majority to pass something. And then biggest problem with the meeting has been lack of transparency, and who's picked and who's gone. And I think the people wanted to be fair, because if I'm sheriff, I can point to one specific, they'll be knowing what I ask them, or they'll do what I ask them. So that's why there needs to be consideration. And like these meetings, you need to be able to hear when you're in the courtroom, keep it in here for the last several meetings, a sound system so everybody can have the right inputs, but you're not putting word in somebody else's mouth.
We ordered new speakers today.
Thank you. But I'm, I'm just saying, you talk this goes to the commissioner, they've not appointed anybody, unless they hurry up and point somebody within the next two weeks, how are you gonna get a vote?
It's May 25th, that's the problem. And I would think they would appoint the person who's one of the-
That would be a good idea, I think it's a way to go. This group has nothing to do with that. We have absolutely zero power over what happens with the board of commissioners going forward.
I understand that. But I'm just saying, so without the open, we're short of commitment on one common conflict, so it needs to be resolved so that it's fair voting. That's all people want is to be treated fair. Now, I understand you got nothing to do with that, but you're saying to a commissioner, you don't need to know one resigned. That's all I gotta say, I'm a baby listener.
Jerry Quirk, Newtown, and I'm sitting here listening, and I keep hearing, "We don't have the power to do that," and I understand that. And I keep hearing you say, "We are to advise the commissioners." Well, is anything that comes from this meeting tonight, from hearing from the people, and when you guys make your decision, is there gonna be any conclusive thing that you're gonna come up with that says, "Our advice is not to do it"?
What we are here to do tonight is to consider this language that I read out.
Yeah.
If we have changes or whatnot, we will do that. What happens after we advise it is not up to us.
Exactly. But is there gonna be any advice from you?
This is the advice, that the whole point of this commission is to, whatever we do to send up to the commissioners becomes the advice to the commissioners for them to act on.
Does that include your advice to them is to not do the solar project?
Well, what we are-
And I know it's all wording and all that, and I understand, but is there anything that is gonna come to that conclusion that you're gonna advise the commissioners to not do it?
What, what we are proposing right now is advising the commissioners to modify the ordinance of this language. And, and the point of this, if it isn't adopted, will end, it'll basically, well, it puts a moratorium for one year on future solar projects. And then we will, and we came up with that at the last meeting, I believe, on Jim's motion? Yes. And we've had the special meeting to do it as fast as we legally can, because if we mess this up, it doesn't matter what we advise, it can be struck down. And so we've had to do this the way it's done, so that we fulfill our legal role as the Advisory Plan Commission, so that whatever the commissioners do then is fully legal.
Yeah, I understand that.
It's good.
Tom Creek, again, Wabash Township, two questions. First of all, who penned this, who, the ordinance, this ordinance?
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to bring it up on this, yeah.
The one that backs around.
The one that was on file that had the language in the moratorium. It's the same language.
Okay, so Kent's office did that, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yesterday, both ordinance, right?
Yeah. Including the language that's in the text.
That's on, that's sure, okay.
And also, when do you plan to rewrite the zoning ordinance for Fiddler in this county?
Well, personally, I would hope to do it over the next year, before June 3rd of 25. Okay. I'm there. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Carol Owens, and last night, Tim said himself that he would not approve of a year moratorium.
Okay.
And he's talked about the overlay that the Montgomery County passed.
Yeah, there, there's a separate process. Once the Plan Commission does its business tonight, what they send to the commissioners as the legislative body, the commissioners can, there, there's a process involved in whether they accept the language, it's certified tonight, they change it, and the process continues.
So does Brenda get a vote? How many of you've gotten your answer from?
We have nothing to do with that.
Hold on, you're-
Could you repeat the question?
I wanna know if Brenda's going to get to vote on this moratorium.
That is, it's, whether, whether she has a conflict is, it's up to her personally.
Isn't there a legal sort of thing about conflict, so she just decides if she wants to vote or not?
Right now, we're gonna public comment for this language specifically. All right?
So that's, that's an important question.
This, this commission doesn't have anything to do with what the commissioners do.
All right, well, I still have a question about your 14 days that you're waiting, or that we talked about earlier.
The, the, if, if this goes, if, if the commissioners take action on the language that is certified tonight, on June 3rd, it will be effective on June 3rd.
I understand what you're saying and why, and I hear your explanation. What I'm reading here, assuming I have the same one everyone else does, is it's further ordained that this ordinance shall be effective 14 days after its adoption, right?
That's, that, yeah, the operating language in that, the, the Plan Commission isn't considering, the, the ordinance will be, might be modified, but the language that they are considering tonight is a moratorium, a one-year moratorium on acceptance of new applications for permits.
All right, so if, if we get the language figured out today, it goes to the commissioners, and they prove it for some reason, then I don't see why it has to wait 14 days.
I'm sorry, it does not.
So then why does this date have to wait?
That, that was in the initial draft, and that, if a, if it has a penalty provision, it can't go into effect for 14 days. When I first drafted that, I thought that, I mistakenly assumed that there might be a penalty, so I erred on the side of putting in the 14 days. It will not, by statute, it won't have to wait 14 days.
Can I get a copy of the current one?
When it's, when it's submitted to the-
How am I supposed to know what you guys are voting on today if I can't read?
They are voting, you know what they're voting on.
Let me, let me, let me go through this again, I'm gonna reread it, all right? We are, we are voting, we are discussing, and then we'll play voting tonight on this addition to the end, to the end of the paragraph of our current zoning ordinance, the solar section of 9.06 CS ES permits. Provided, comma, however, comma, a moratorium is hereby imposed on the filing and acceptance of any new applications for permits under this article, comma, and this moratorium will commence on June 3, 2024, and end on June 3, 2025.
But you're saying that the commissioners approve it, it can commence on May 20?
I'm not saying anything about that, because I have nothing to do with commissioners.
Well, then we should be able to change that language.
And, well, again, it, they, the, the- Earlier, commissioners could take this up is 10 days from tomorrow, and then their next scheduled meeting is June 3, so that's when it'll be taken, that's when it'll go to the commissioners.
Yeah.
All right, well, very confused.
I apologize, I was, the, the text, the text amendment language is contained in that document, and that's, that's what the commission-
Is what he read the only thing that's in there? Is there, is there no longer anything in there about overlay?
Well, the, the reason, the, the reason for the moratorium is so that the Plan Commission can study and consider changes to the entirety of Article 9, which is the solar ordinance. And one of the options that was discussed at the last meeting is an, an overlay concept that would make solar permitted only in an ag overlay, which would require a rezone, regardless of what, if it's permitted in the ag overlay, so all future permits would have to go through the rezone process if an overlay is, so that, the, the reason for the moratorium is for the Plan Commission to consider that, or whatever else they think is, is appropriate for amending the solar ordinance as a stretch.
So it's the overlay district language in what you have right there in front of you?
No, everything I read is all that we're talking about at this point. The overlay district concept is fundamental, it would be a complete rewrite from scratch of the entire ordinance. And so the whole point of talking about this tonight, the reason it's tonight, one is so that this is the quickest, that this group can legally act, to actually make it work. There's no point in doing something if it's not gonna work. And this is to give this commission time to fully actually consider a complete rewrite, to then do it, I'll say correctly, so that instead of having meeting after meeting that basically we can't get anything done, this is to be able to, instead of rushing into a complete rewrite, this will give us time to do that.
I, I get that, but so then here the whole May 20th, June 3rd thing? I, I guess, so I write other counties' moratoriums, and they are effective the day the commissioner assigned them.
Okay, so we're not the commissioners.
I know you're not the commissioner, but the 20th is when the commissioners are gonna meet and talk about what you guys decide, is that not right?
I have no idea. All I deal with is this, I have nothing to do with commissioners.
By statute, the commissioner, if, if this decision, if the commission makes a decision tonight, it will be certified as of tomorrow, the commissioners, next meeting is on the 20th, 10 days, they, the 20th is too soon for the 10 days to pass, so it has to be, they, they can't take it up until the June 3rd.
So in 10 days, that's when the public gets to read what you guys just passed, and then we go to the commissioners and say we like it or we don't, or why do they need this 10 days?
That's what the state law says. And if we don't follow the state law, it doesn't matter what we do, then it's, then we lose. It's that simple. Yes?
Dave Maltzberger, Maltzberger Township, I have a question to address to Mr. McKee, because we're here looking at this document and the language that we want to send to the commission, correct? Okay, so there was, I was in that meeting, and there were other people here too, in the meeting where you asked for that moratorium. In that moratorium that you asked, and that everybody voted on, there was nothing said that night about an overlay.
We're not talking about an overlay.
But if it's in the language of what we're sending up with this, all right?
It's not, it's not, it's not.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring everybody back to him here. I'm gonna read it one more time, all right? Provided, however, a moratorium is hereby imposed on the filing and acceptance of any new applications for permits under this article, and this moratorium will commence on June 3, 2024, and end on June 3, 2025. That is what this meeting is here about. Does anybody have comments on this?
Because that's what, I was getting confused, and we were talking about overlays, and we got off into that, the language.
So we are not talking about overlays, we are talking about the language that I have-
Okay, right.
Just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, so while we're actually going voting, so everybody's kind of clear. Is there anybody here not on the same page with me at this point, on what we're talking about tonight? Okay. Does anybody else have comments on this language? Yes, Carol?
Carol, once again, Maltzger Township. Now, if you hope to approve this and send it up to the commissioners, can the commissioners change the date from 25 to an earlier date?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Okay.
So they can move it to one month moratorium if they want to?
Yes.
And at the same, at the same time, is it possible to write it where, if it passes on June 14, it's retroactive back to day 14?
Everything we do here is advisory, because the commissioners do not have to follow anything that we give them, but we have to give them something to act on, to create, I'll call it a motion, like you would have in a meeting, to cause an action to happen. And so we are trying to do that tonight as quickly as legally possible. Okay? Does anybody else have comments on this language?
I have a comment on this. So the Fountain County-
All right, I need your name.
Emily Jackson.
Address, if you say.
The Fountain County Advisory Plan Commission conducted a public hearing. Are, are any of those people electricians? I mean, how, how do you make a vote on electric when you're an online electrician? So can we put in there something about a study or something being done, for people that actually know what's going on, instead of allowing it to go through the Fountain County Advisory Plan Commission?
I'm not, I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, you said all the permits have to go through the Advisory Plan Commission, and none of those people are electricians.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I understand. The, the commission set up as Indiana statute requires.
This seems like a pretty big issue, so can we put in a study, can we do something about studying what's going to happen so far, the, the counties that have already put into it, and what's that, and what that's done, as far as like cost saving, how many homes save power, where this, where this power is going? I mean, the one in Frankfurt, East California, and I know that in Littleton.
Okay.
So is there something that we could do for that? I mean, running it through the advisory committee is really cool, but if you're not an electrician, if you don't know the infrastructure, you're voting on something you don't understand.
Are you talking about language that's already in the ordinance?
I am, yes.
Okay, all we're talking about is changing that last, adding that last sentence to put a moratorium on. The point of this is to give this commission time to fully consider a complete revamp of the solar ordinance. If, if there's comments about everything you just said, that would be for the complete revamp. But the point of this is to do everything this group can to put a halt to it, so that we have time to then fully redo it. There is no way realistically, at least given what I've seen in the last three months, of- of completely redoing it from scratch and getting it done. And in the meantime, I don't know how many solar companies have, have, you know, danced around here, but the point of this is to move as quickly as we can to put a stop to anything future, to give us time to consider everything else. That, that's, that's all we're trying to do here tonight.
Is to put a stop to, as I'm making sure the language is...
This language would put a stop to future applications for that year. Anybody else comments on this language?
Comment about...
John Barker, fourteen sixty-seven, Eastern Backcountry Road. Um, I'm new to the community, so I hate to see these things fall, but it's a beautiful area. I enjoy it.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you, can you move forward and speak up, please? Thank you.
Okay, John Barker, fifteen sixty-seven, Eastern Backcountry Road.
I, I wonder, since everybody's talking about the existing applications that are in and moving forward, can you, can you stop the furtherance of those applications? Can you add that language to this, to say, yeah, we're gonna, we don't wanna accept anymore, but we also wanna halt or...
Not approve. Not, this, this commission can't do that.
You can't recommend it in this language.
And if we recommend it, you do it, you answer this one. That's, I mean, it, it's what we answered before, you, under the law, you can't stop the ones that are in the process. We're, this does everything we can, this stops future, that's all this commission is able to do.
But I'm not saying stop and reject it, I'm saying any furtherance of what's happening right now, pause, everything.
This group has nothing to do with that. This is the best we can do to stop any future solar farms. Does anybody else have comments on this language?
The board, do you feel comfortable with what you wrote? You're trying to add this, do you, do you people feel comfortable with it?
Well, that's what we're here to have a meeting on, so once the public comment's done, then we're gonna try to have that discussion. Any other public comments? No, well, yes, sir.
I have one though, I'll try to explain. So if we change any language in the verbiage of this, because this has been put up for public notes, so that's where we're back to this spot here, okay, but we would have to go back through the whole days of process and public noting, and if we make any change in any language of what we got right here in this, this verbiage, and it would further delay the whole process, right?
Potentially.
Okay.
Anybody else on this language? If not, we're gonna close the public comment, we're gonna have the, uh, meeting now to talk about it. Excuse me.
I, I've got a question somebody wanted me to ask.
Alright, come up, say your name.
I'm asked, the question that somebody wanted me to ask was, does anybody on this advisory board have family members or people related to them that is gonna get solar panels?
Would that person like to come up and ask the question?
I'm asking, I'll ask it for myself then, because they didn't want to, but I'll ask them. Does anybody on advisory have family members, or someone close to them that's gonna get solar panels? More or less family members, I think is what they wanna ask.
That's when, that's when you get solar panels, is that what you said?
Yes, what they're asking, because one was just said, that you cannot stop when one that are already a landowner.
Are you gonna benefit from it?
Does anybody on this advisory, they wanna know, do you have any family members or relatives that wanna get solar panels?
It's gonna benefit from those panels.
That's the question.
I've got family that will sell land to the solar panels, or to the solar farm, but we're not participating in the solar farm.
That's what they wanted to know, so I'm asking for myself too, as well, so they wanna...
Alright, does anybody have comments on this language? Alright, we're gonna close the public comment period, we're gonna start the meeting, okay?
I'll start now, I, I support this language, I think that's all we can do right now, is pass this language, John, to the commissioners for their action.
Should we go around?
Uh, I'm also in favor of this, uh, this verbiage as it's going forward. I think, like Jim said, I think that's, this is what we can do for right now.
So I think this is the best recommendation, 'cause we are listening to the people of Fountain County, we are trying to respect everybody, and if this can help pause it for a little bit, then that gives us time all to work together, so I think the verbiage is what we're...
While still following Indiana law.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it, and there was a comment earlier about, I think essentially it was due diligence, right, I believe it was you that made the comment. That, that's, that's what this language is really provided to do, is to allow us to have time. There's been a lot of information shared with us, trust me, go through all of it, and we do our best to understand it, and to make the decisions that are best for Fountain County. And that is a no way advocating for any particular group, um, but this gives us time to ensure that we're being thoughtful, doing the responsible thing that's best for Fountain County. So, agree with the others that this is, this, this is good, and what we can do right now, I think, will allow us to be much more effective.
Do you need to raise your hand, please?
Sorry, be more effective, not just writing the ordinance around solar, but the company's plan at large.
Speak up, Lynn.
I think this is the best we can do, and we've got good attorneys that geared up, so...
Don't be a blind eye, I'm not the attorney for this group, I just happen to be in line, so... Make that crystal clear at every step, everything is, is a law.
I think we're ready to vote.
Does anybody wanna propose, talk about any, any possible changes or anything, other than, I mean, everybody's happy with this language?
I'll make the motion, man.
So the motion, send it with a favorable, unfavorable, or negative?
Favorable.
We need a second on that, right? Then I'll second.
Alright, everybody who wants to vote has a, or a favorable recommendation on this, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody votes?
Okay, so I would ask that Mr. Vice Chair, if you could, fill the box for a favorite or a opponent. Also, to note for the record, uh, Mr. McGraw is not here this, this evening because of a, a conflict that may be personal to the members, uh, because of the potential of a conflict, or a conflict, Mr. McGraw did not attend the meeting tonight, and is abstaining from, from this vote. I wanna make sure that's noted in the meeting minutes. Oh, I'm abstaining.
I dropped them off in here. She has a 4-H meeting going on too. Okay, what else is on the agenda?
You want to talk about backgrounds?
Right. So then is there a public comment on, just in general, or are we, okay?
Um, so, alright, so we've concluded the business for this special meeting. Um, I would, um... I'm gonna do the business tonight.
Can we have some quiet, please, so we can hear? Thank you.
This is a, so we've concluded the business, the special meeting, I mean, that's a special meeting, we're not doing any own business. Um, I would like to make a motion to cancel next week's...
Speak up, please.
I'd like to make a motion to cancel next week's, uh, regular meeting and then, and then continue our normal business at the following meeting in, uh, June. So I made the motion, and wait one second. Alright, we have a vote, really, in favor of canceling next week's regular meeting and continuing in June.
That's right.
What do you guys think?
Do we have a plan for the next meeting? Do we wanna focus on the ordinances, or do we wanna focus on the...
Well, what I would propose, since I could be in charge tonight, um, is I would, uh, uh, we still have outstanding, this commission's duties on the uh, comprehensive plan, and so I would like to try to take that up, to get that done. If anybody has changes, et cetera, that they wanna circulate over to Congress or whatnot, I think that we oughta try to discuss that. Um, and then at some point, I would like to get back to the proposed changes on the, uh, what I actually really deep down here about on the regular zone. Um, and I will tell you that I am meeting with, uh, Roger to go through a lot of the technical details and excruciating detail to, to come up with a lot of stuff. And so we're, we're spending a lot of time on that. So, so I'm just making sparky comments here, so. Alright, so I think that's all the actual business we have for tonight. As far as this goes. Alright, so now we're gonna open the, um, meeting up to, uh, general public comment. Now we've got the business for the special meeting done. So if anybody has general public comment, now is your chance, come up, state your name, et cetera.
Can we get a bigger room where everybody can get in?
My understanding is no, I am happy to report that I have nothing to do with that. Any public comment?
Yeah, uh, your name, please? Derek May. Um, so this will go to the commissioners tonight and look aside whether or not we're going to agree to it, it's my understanding. What is the best way for us to be informed on what their decision was?
The meeting will be at nine AM on June third, in, in this room. Now, if, in response to your question, ma'am, if, if a large crowd is anticipated, then they would have to clear it with Judge Campbell. But it's possible, I don't know if it helps on hearing or that, that there's sound equipment up there, but that there is larger space in the courtroom. So the commissioners may consider, if they anticipate a large crowd on this issue, they could potentially move to the... And if it's a really big crowd, I mean, I would rather use for clients that reserve space at school gymnasiums, so. But the June third is, it will be that meeting, nine AM in this room.
Uh, so June third is when they're actually going to make the vote, as to whether or not they will agree with this?
It, it's up to the commissioners on whether it's on their agenda on that date, but that's what I anticipate.
Okay.
And they'll put that out ahead of time if it's gonna be on the agenda?
So the agendas haven't been posted online prior to the picture meetings, or at least, I mean, last time I checked, in March, I went through them.
Prior to March, or after March? If it's after March, I disagree with you, because I post them.
Well, I'll maybe look at my stuff, but I've been trying to find where the agendas are. And I'll wake up in the morning and be like, ah, I can't get there, you know, let me check again, and see if I really need to get there, and it's long.
Usually they're posted on Friday before the meeting on Monday.
I will go and look where my dates are, but I have been regularly realizing they're not posted, so please, post this one very early, so we have lots of them. Thank you.
Jake Martin, um, my question does go towards the zoning ordinance on solar. Um, is there any kind of environmental inspection plans or anything concerning these panels? Because from some of the research I've done online, they do, or may contain environmentally hazardous material, if not hazardous material for the populations, such as items like cadmium, lead, and other longer art accounts, or... So I, I was wondering, is the ordinance that is going to be rewritten going to have a general outline for the handling of those panels? And they are disposed of, how, and, and if there's gonna be any kind of inspection period set up to locate any kind of severe damage to any of these farms that you posed a question?
Uh, right now, the answer is I have no idea, because we at this group haven't had a chance to write any ordinance. Uh, I would kind of assume that's kind of a standard thing, but I have no idea. Uh, that's the answer right now.
It's not standard.
So there's nothing in the current ordinance that deals with any of that? Like the electrical stuff they brought up, or the water, underground water, if there's drainage in the water system, different things like that?
Roger.
Roger.
I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. When, when we look at the comments, there's a lot of comments on all the ordinances, including, uh, solar ordinance. Um, we can always defer back to EPA's, uh, small quantity, um, spills. EPA states anything that is less than five gallons, uh, anything between, sorry, anything between five and fifty-five gallons is considered a small spill. Is remediated on the spot, it's called spot removal, where you overdig the area that's contaminated, you send it to a retro landfill, and you remedy the soil if there's anything left there. Um, that would fall under that considering if one panel breaks or two panels break. God forbid we happen to know that and we're talking about something much bigger than just one or two panels. You're, you're talking, you're talking at that point where as, as beds are gonna come in and doesn't make it as an impacted area and then it gets to be remediated under that program. So for the protection of the citizens that are worried about groundwater, um, we can apply an inspection. I mean, obviously, the solar companies don't want their stuff to break, but we can have somebody from the county, whether it's an engineer or technician or whoever it is, to do a quarterly inspection, walk these fields, make sure there are no broken elements, and if there are broken elements, then we would recommend an immediate cleanup on that spot elevation. For one panel, you don't expect more than fifty-five gallons of whatever's in there to be discharged into the ground. So it's lead and cadmium, lead and cadmium usually lock into the soil very quickly. It's the perchlorates, trichloratlenes, which are not in those panels, those are the ones you worry about, because they love water, it'll get to groundwater. So whatever breaks out of these panels could be contained to be removed. So that's something, you know, when we address our, our updates, um, it is not prohibitive to have something like that, but we have quarterly inspections that would allow the county to inspect these fields, and if there are any issues, if there's any concern, any staining, any, any grass not living, any indication that there's an environmental impact, to go back to those companies, say, you shall address, collect samples, prove to us that you have not impacted our fields, and then we can move forward from there.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I've been in the chemical field for twenty-some odd years.
Yes, sir.
A certified applicator, and we had to carry a sheet.
Can I ask you yes, that is you?
No. When we sprayed chemicals, we had to register the reportable quantities that was in that machine.
That, that is correct.
And we had to spill, we had to report that.
That is also correct. The spraying down...
Now, the chemicals you were talking about in them solar panels.
Yes, sir.
How many of them things can you put in a field and not have a reportable quantity of chemicals? That's too much for that area.
Well, I mean, if you have a systemic failure, if you have a shaft that broke twenty in a row, then obviously you have an issue. As long as you're under fifty-five gallons, you can do spot cleanup. If you exceed fifty-five gallons, that is a remediation. So there is that threshold of five fifty-five gallons. Anything less than five gallons, if you spill a gallon of gasoline in your yard, you don't have to report it, you just take it out, clean it up, you're good. So you, what you're talking about is correct, pesticides, herbicides, those have a special rule application requirement, yes, you have to. When, when I worked with the permanent defense, I used to have a NAD license, and we used to carry C four of the different installations. I would have to report every ounce. You are under the same restrictions, you have to report where you put your, I mean, your, your stuff. I had to report every ounce. This does not apply to gasoline, it does not apply to diesel, it does not apply to many other chemicals.
What if it gets in the field tiles that are all over the county?
Sir, it's possible, again, you know, you have, that's why, you know, what I'm, what I'm proposing is that we could have an inspection section in that new rule that was proposed to say, the county will inspect these on a quarterly basis, and if there's any impact, we need to remediate it or take care of it immediately.
Well, well, who's doing special work?
I did.
Sorry?
Yeah, he's doing special, he's doing special work.
I mean, there's, there's, yeah, I don't, look, I have, I have no, no beef in this. If, if, if something breaks, there's a way to remediate it. If it's close to your well and it gets into your well, then your well is not gonna be punctual, because remediation is complete. Um, you know, there are many scenarios that I, I can't cover all of them, you know, what if a tornado comes through?
So then, so then let's talk about remediation, do those are remediation? I mean, are you gonna be the GC, or are you gonna sub that out to, uh, you know, union halls that hire union electricians and what you're talking about? Or is it gonna be non-union and busting a bus full of Haitians, like what I saw in Portina Electric in Frankfurt?
Or expect the Chinese to do the, they're gonna own these things.
I mean, I mean, who's in charge of QA, you said yourself?
Those, those are, those are a lot of people. My, my job would be to do the inspection and identify whether there's been a leak or not.
You know, I, probably you're talking about, everybody's talking about their wells, and talking about piles and drains, and that's why I brought this up in the last commission meeting. I'd like to see where this is going, when we have had a drainage board for thirty years. Or with that, by the way, the last one's artist, it was all this. And then suddenly, all of them, ten size, we're gonna have a drainage board. We gotta have a drainage board, because you gotta have a drainage board because part of the process, but then no solar panels. But I wish them that we had a five-person, where three of them are non-ag or not involved people. But our commissioners voted to only have one commissioner and two others on that board. That board needs to have five people, so there's plenty of oversight, because we're not talking about what farmers are doing, and we're not talking about the Coats' ditch project, or we're gonna dredge again. We're talking about how we're gonna sink them pilings in the ground and not bust them piles that are down there, been down there for a hundred years. That's what we're talking about.
And they're gonna break, because that's how it's been buried, the MV and the AC line, or the MVs and the AC lines, I mean, there are thousands of broken field piles right now in Frankfurt.
I, I do, I do not speak to the broken piles, the broken piles are winning, I can tell you about the public piles.
But you're leaving the land.
Ma'am, say. I can tell you about the public piles.
Alright, Roger, I'm gonna call it back to order here, uh, just to remind everybody, public comments, not just for general back and forth. Uh, public comment is, if you have anything for this board at this point.
Speak up, please.
Uh, otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, we'll move to end the meeting.
I have one.
Yep?
What we're witnessing is...
Name it, please.
Name is David Jenkins, All West Township. What we're witnessing is government work. They make it so big, you create committees that do nothing except stumble the process, while we, the people, stand at a meeting, wasting our time, telling you what we want. Meanwhile, the corporations steamroll us.
Yes, that's exactly what we're doing.
While this whole process takes us four months now, three months since I've been involved, and it's a bit longer than that, because I just, I found out about it in the, well, when the pamphlet came out, it says, hey, by the way, there's a zoning, which pissed me off, because we thought we, my family thought zoning was dead with the dump. Then we find out, well, no, the zoning is part of this process that just drags us into the dirt and gives the corporations all of a leeway. We, the people, are the ones that live here, and we're saying, stop it. You're an advisory committee that does nothing except advise, advise. We, the people, don't want it. Do I have skin in the game? No. Am I near it yet? No. But my groundwater is. And there's plenty of people that are documenting the tiles. For hundreds of years, we've had cemeteries. If you're close to a cemetery, I guarantee you, you have cemetery water in your well. That might be a little gross to somebody, but it's fact. It won't take that long for this shit to be in our ground, then, okay, guess what, we've got contaminated water, you can't use well anymore. How long before they condemn our ground and say, you can't live there anymore? I'm one person speaking. How many believe what I believe that aren't here, because they get so pissed off? Advisory committee, stop it. Done, over. People say no. I agree.
Yes, sir.
One last comment. Since you are the zoning advisory board, you probably all have on your mind that within the next one to twelve months, you're gonna be rewriting this ordinance on solar. Can you just point blank say, no solar in Fountain County in this ordinance? I just leave it at that? Can that be done?
Yeah, what means the...
No, not, it's, no, and zoning, you can't...
So when you rewrite the ordinance, when you rewrite the ordinance after the moratorium is finished or during that time, when you get to the point where there's a new ordinance, just like there was for wind, or now there's one for solar, one sentence, no solar farms in Fountain County.
I wouldn't advise that the plant commission or the commissioners do that, they, because under Indian law, you can't prescribe, uh, particular uses. You can only regulate it to the extent that it's allowed under the Indiana Code and, and case law on land use.
So you're, you're responsible as then to overregulate, so that, so the, so it's not attractive for the county, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, long and short of, right?
Hence, yes.
Thank you.
So, my name is Larry Schross in Evansville County here, it's been done. So, in response to that last exchange, overregulating happened with the windmills, with twenty-seven pages? Is what we understand? And it was invited in, made, uh, attractive to come in with solar panels with a thirteen-page...
Three-page?
Three-page? Regulation. So we need to change the regulation so that we get the, to the point that we, uh, to his point, that it was, we can overregulate so that we don't have the, this open.
Dave Malzberger, I know we talked about the next meeting, we're gonna try to focus more like towards the comprehensive plan, try to go, try to flush that one out. Do we have any studies that we've been requested anywhere on environment, on, um, wildlife, on soil damage? Do we have any, any studies that we've been requested yet, how, to anyone? So we got something to review and look at for that comprehensive plan, and what the impact of this or that would be in this area? That's, well, I know what a comprehensive plan does, the county, and we don't have the power to do that anyway. Uh, the county hired the...
Speak up, please.
County hired whatever consultant it was to do a comprehensive plan, propose one, uh, that will meet the statutory requirements. Again, this board or commission has the, uh, advisory role to, um, to approve it, recommend it, and then it goes through the exact same process. That's just the, that's just the state law. But what you're talking about doesn't really have anything to do with the comprehensive plan. The, the comprehensive plan helps guide how we do the zoning for it. Depends on who you ask, you know, I would say not... Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm just asking our, our ATC. Now, and that's to the ATC, if, if the comprehensive plan is gonna help guide our zoning, then we need a lot of research on the backside of what various things... I, I know the county has already spent, I'm making up a number, but I guess thirty grand on that comprehensive plan?
More than that.
Alright, more than that. Um, it meets the statutory requirements, I'm sure everybody here has read it more than once, I know I've... Yeah, but it only has solar mention one time. Um, I thought it didn't have any solar mention, one or two, maybe I meant... It says one time, but... So, yeah, that is, how are we going to, how are we gonna decide what we're gonna do with zoning if we don't have the impact studies of if we go in this direction, how that's gonna impact the county or the citizens or the water? So, we gotta have something to kind of use it as a, as a guideline.
Roger, were you peeking around the corner for a comment?
Sorry, ma'am.
Were, were you peeking around the cor- the corner to comment on...
We do, we do partial, we do wetlands, we make sure that they remediate where all the wetlands are, and they have to, they have to follow the Army Corps of Engineers requirements for wetlands are. They can't just say, no, there's no wetlands here. Um, and if, if there is, you know, there's habitat for the ground bags or the ag bag, then they have to identify those. We do not do archaeological, those are the three things usually, like, type of projects, they do major species, archaeological, and wetlands.
Yep, name?
Whatever Gibson, Davis Township. Nobody's gonna tell me that whoever owns these solar fields are gonna be interested in cleaning up every little spill and taking care of what it's supposed to be. Everybody knows better than that. It's not gonna get caught in times, it'll be right in groundwater. It's just, there's no way.
And when we're talking about revamping the solar ordinance, um, after thirteen forty-eight went into law, we have to change ag ground classified one hundred to eight hundred classification. And then that eight hundred classification, the only, the only two sections in there is industrial and commercial, that's where solar has to be now according to thirteen forty-eight. So, we don't have, we have industrial zone areas, but that's certainly not, and we can have solar there, but we don't have any ag. And our ag doesn't have a specific one for commercial. We would have to add commercial to that. We've got solar listed on the, the state says you can't have solar on ag, it has to be thirteen forty-eight. So just something to think about as we're revamping our, our some, our zoning to what the use is. Do you want to have any other comments? Yep?
I have a complaint too, we have it in All West Township. As, uh, we can talk about the two solar, the Dalton Solar and the Ranger Power, has any other permits been requested? Such as ex national liberty or primorums?
I have no idea. It's not what this commission does.
The lawyer doesn't?
I don't know.
Last night, they said no permits have been given yet.
That's not what I asked, I asked if they'd been requested. I don't mean to be, I just, that's not, I need them to answer, if anybody has requested a permit since Dalton and Jeanette, or, um...
I'm not, I'm not aware of any other business.
If you, you're almost right.
Plant, right.
Roger. I, I haven't received anything other than those two.
Okay, why, I think I'm back, why do we have an elected official answering this question? I don't get that.
Because Roger, Roger is, let's see, well, contracted? Is contracted to be the city, or the county attorney.
We have people that have no skin in the game, this, that's not, we cannot account for this. We have, he, we have to have somebody that is accountable to the people that vote that make these rules. That's, that's, that's just not how we, we can fish.
Yeah, it, it's, the, the, this commission doesn't make hiring decisions for the county.
I just want everybody to know, though, that we have an elected official making this decision, that's our statement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question for Roger.
Everybody needs to know. Alright, somebody else specific, or am I short on Roger?
How much money does the county pay you and how many do you need for the solar farms?
Oh, that's an easy question, that's a very easy question. The, the county pays me on retention, so whatever I'm, I was in, I am pleased. And Colleen has those, and they are available for the public. And if you ever think I have anything to do with solar farms, I will challenge you to get a third-party accountant, come and look into my financials, my personal, and my company financials, and I'll be more than happy to open the books. I have zero interest in these companies, I am here to do an administrative job. I am not an elected official, I am a contractor that is working for you guys.
There's still a lot of evidence online to say the opposite.
What is the evidence that you have?
There's several pages, I didn't have a chance to even say the whole...
Sir, I'm gonna make it simple for you, get a third-party auditor, and I will open my, I'm saying in public in front of everybody, my personal financials and my company financials are all for audit.
Alright, so again, I'm gonna go back. Alright, the public comment is for this commission, does anybody have anything else for this commission?
Yeah, Brad.
Take your name, please.
On the wind ordinance...
Take your name, please, Brad.
Brad, great. On the wind ordinance in Indiana, on the wind ordinance, there's setbacks, correct? You know what they are?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Two thousand three hundred and forty feet, is that the...
Are you asking or telling?
I, I'm asking, that's correct.
Would you ask, I'd have to pull up the...
Yeah, I don't know, go ahead.
Okay. So what's the setback result?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I know it's two hundred, couple hundred, I'm not sure on that. I wanna say off the top of my head, it's two hundred.
That's from any road east, uh, there's differences depending, yes.
Yeah, it's two hundred, I'm really okay.
Did you find in there where, what the setback is for wind?
It's a lot more.
Are you looking to, or do you want me to? You're right, you're right, nevermind, you're right. But I think what we're saying is, all of these proposed ordinances are, uh, still in draft form. And so if there are folks that have opinions on what the setback should be for wind for solar, please voice your opinion.
That's the point of doing the moratorium.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else have any more, um, public comments for the commission?
One point two miles, are you asking for opinion on how far we're at solar, actually?
Yes.
Well, if we have to do solar, instead of just dating it, one point two miles, is what studies show is a safe limit for solar panels. And also, when Dalton Solar was here talking last night, you said we've exceeded what's been expected. My understanding of that is they went from the fifty setback, but I think that's in the ordinances, to three megapet. We've been working with them to try to get further setbacks, we're surrounded on all four sides. Their offering is nothing, they're sticking to their plan, so that would be my recommendation.
Alright, last call for public comments for the commission.
I just got a question. For myself, a lot of the people here, they're not in the county mirrors, and it's for a lawyer. And don't take this personally, because I don't know you, and you don't know me, whatever. But do you work for the council, for the commissioners, or do you work for the county and the people? I mean, how, how is your job applied?
I'm hired to, I, I represent the board of commissioners, and I represent, as the executive, and I, I would also represent any other... and I also represent any other board or commission that they assign me to give legal advice on procedures, and, but that's, that's the statutory Indiana law controls what a county attorney, or a city attorney's job is, and I follow that. And the direct answer to your question is, I represent the board of commissioners in their executive capacity.
So primarily, your job is to try to make your thing legal, whatever they want to do, regardless of what the people...
Everything, everything a municipal government does is according to Indiana statute. There's not, there's not any common law or judgment law, other than how judges interpret their statutes. So every time they want to buy something, there's a, there's a statute that applies. Every time they want to build something, there's a statute. Every time we have a meeting, there's about ten different statutes that apply. So that's, that's the role of municipal councils in local governments.
All right, I am going to make the motion to terminate the meeting, because I'd like to second.
I'll second.
All right, vote. Anybody against it?